It's six o'clock straight up and down before we start this meeting tonight. Robert, would you offer the prayer, please?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity that we have to gather for this Grant City Council meeting. We're grateful to live in this beautiful city. We're grateful for the blessings that we receive every day. We're thankful for the roads that are being fixed and the infrastructure that's being worked on. And all these things cost a lot of money. And we pray that thou will bless our leaders with wisdom as they deliberate these important items and be able to make the very best decisions possible. We thank thee for the moisture that thou has set. And we ask thee, Father, to send more, that our ranchers and farmers will have what they need, that our dry land will have the water that it needs to flourish. We are grateful for the citizens of this city, this community. And we pray that thou will bless those, especially those who may be suffering at this time, who may be sick and afflicted, those who may be poor, those who may be depressed. We ask thee to bless them and to watch over them and to inspire us as to how we can bless them and help them. We ask for these blessings humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, you guys got your recorders going? I want you to get all of this, okay? Before we start this meeting tonight, I'm gonna make some comments. This thing with Milan and the wastewater treatment plant and the papers displaying out like it's a pissy match between me and Paul Pena. I want to make everybody very much aware that this pissy match between Milan and the village has been going on since the early 80s. Okay, make no doubt about it, we got the paperwork to prove it. Since way back then, they've been arguing that they don't send that much sewer to us, okay? So, those facts being said. Couple of things in the paper that upset me, number one, they're saying that we raise everybody's bill by 3% every year. It's never ever happened, never. Okay, not in my, the 12 years I've been here, 13 years now. And I don't think it ever happened before that. That being said, that squares up one of the falsehoods or fabrications or whatever you wanna call it, okay? The second one is litigation, okay? Let me go ahead and say this. Ron Ortiz, when he was the mayor and when he was a councilman, he spent a whole bunch of his time trying to get Milan to pay their bill. Don't believe me, ask Ron Ortiz, okay? Secondly, for two years Milan did not pay anything on their sewer bill, nothing at all. Okay, and the bill was up to over $600,000. My personality being what it is, me not being politically correct, a little harsher than most people in the way I speak, we determined here as a council that we would send then Mayor Pro-Tin Michael Lewis, the most mild-mannered person you would ever meet in your life. One of the most nice guys you'll ever meet in your life. And him and Laura went and they negotiated with the village, I don't know, four or five times?
Six.
Six times, whatever it was, okay? And the bill was over $600,000. And those men... And you're gonna spend $112,000 in lawyer's fees to get money that they're not gonna give you anyway. So make your choice, Mayor. So at that point, we made the choice to write off over $500,000 of that bill and let them slide on it, instead of taking them to court and making them pay lawyer's fees and make us pay lawyer fees for what they owe us. And like I said, guys, there's paperwork in here, goes all the way back to 1997 into the 80s, about Milan always arguing about how much crap they send to us, okay? Furthermore, Milan was a partner in this wastewater treatment plant that was built now, okay? The one that we just decommissioned. They didn't wanna be partners in this new one. We offered them a partnership in it, they said no. So make, get clear on this. Everything that we have done in the building and the meters has been at the request of Milan. All of it, okay? The meter readings, all of that was at the request of Milan. And I warned them, when we did this, careful what you ask for. You're not gonna like what comes to the meter. Why? Because I had read all the paperwork from back to the 80s. I've studied this, I know what I'm talking about, I know what it costs, okay? So the state had ordered us that we had to include Milan, because believe me, we could've done it for a lot cheaper if we didn't have to include Milan. And we wouldn't be at a grade four, we'd be at a grade three and it would be a heck of a lot cheaper to operate. The whole nine yards, everything would've went down instead of up, okay? In there it says Milan is being charged more than anybody else. Milan is being charged exactly what everybody else is being charged. Period, okay? Never before has it ever came up about line service. Not all the way back into the 80s. It's never came up in any negotiation ever until this article came out now. Never, guys. And now they're saying that we need to service their lines too. Because they paying for it, okay? Well, if that were true, they should, they should be paying a lot more than what they are. Because they're not paying their fair share, okay? But what really gets me about the whole thing is how far back this goes and how many times they've taken advantage of the city of Grants. And all I've done is tried to make it equal to where the citizens of Grants are not being taken advantage of. Paul Pena is doing exactly what they're paying him to do over there at the village. Make no doubt about it. He's advocating for the village and he's trying to get the best prize for his employer that he can. Make no doubt about it. I'm doing exactly what the citizens of Grants elected me to do. And that's to protect their interests and to protect their bills. So they don't go up all the time. So those are the true facts about what's going down here, okay? We weren't ordered to do anything. I agreed to do it. We could still be in court tied up waiting on it. I thought when we did that, this arbitration was gonna end it. When did we go to arbitration? July?
I don't remember.
Okay, July, June, I think it was June or July, right in there. The arbitrators ruled, this is what's gonna happen, you are gonna pay because Grants wrote this off, you're gonna pay so much for the meter readings, all this good stuff. In August, they only paid a portion of their bill. One month after arbitration, guys. Those are the two facts. Okay, I mean, and to say anything else, and like I said, this has been going on long before Paul Pena was ever hired over there and long before I was ever elected as the mayor. All I've been trying to do is stop it, I mean, to bring it into check, okay? Those statements being made, I'll call the meeting to order now at 6:10 PM. Go call.
Mayor Nix?
Present.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez?
Mayor.
Councilor Poyah?
Here.
And Councilor Lee Serrano?
Absent. You please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Who brought the agenda? Should be nice and short and sweet.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez?
Yes.
Councilor Poyah?
Yes.
Citizens to address the council, nobody out there signed up. So I guess nobody wants to talk. If you wanna talk later on when the subject comes up, raise your hand and we'll do it, okay? Public comments and discussion on the charter compliance or not in compliance with our charter. Approval of the city council meeting minutes. Any corrections?
I make a motion to approve the city council minutes for 12, 13, 18.
Second.
I second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez?
Yes.
Councilor Poyah?
Yes.
Waste Management, may I hear your report? Who's gotta be there?
Dan, um, Dan Darnell was supposed to be here, I don't see him, so we may have forgotten. He had requested, um, last month, I moved him to this month and told him that...
What was he gonna tell us, that we're coming online when?
For waste management?
Oh, that's right, that's our trash.
Yeah, our trash. Yeah, he was just gonna give you guys a report of how things are going with their department, so we'll...
Call that boy, Governor Mary very happy to put him on the agenda and him not show up. Okay? Telling me not to get back on the agenda until he's contracted, so... IT Department, step up and talk to me.
Alrighty.
We have Bob Wetton here, who's our director of the IT department.
And I've always called him Bob Wheaton.
You should know better.
Yes, I'm sorry, Bob.
How do you spell your last name?
Okay, um, for a long time I was the IT department. I do have one more person that works with me with the waste department. I haven't had a chance to report, so basically I've been working since November of 2015. When I started, my favorite thing to say was we had like a ball of necklace chains. And it was my job to get it all undone.
Well, you've done a heck of a job, I'll give you that much.
I was sitting there going through everything I've done and you know what, we've done really good.
Yes, you have.
When I started, we had, we had 20 computers that were over six years old that we replaced. Some of them I had to drag them out of their hands to replace them, but we did replace them. We've actually replaced the server here at the city hall. We no longer are paying, from my understanding, an other expensive lease on a server we had that was only servicing one program. And we now have the whole, this whole building network together and secured. We also were networked with the police department and with Fire Station 1. That's going on ongoing. My goal is within five years we have the whole city network together. So that information, instead of having to be printed on a paper and carry, we're gonna, we'll be able to send electronic. We've worked on that, we actually have a lot of our forums now as electronic forums instead of having to print out a paper, give it to somebody and then put it in the computer. One of the things when I started was I noticed that the city departments were all, it's my department, it's my money, and mine, mine, mine. When I looked at Laura, when I looked at where it looked like I saw the city going, I felt like one of the things that I needed to work on was it's not mine, it's ours. We're a city, we're not individual departments that are only taking care of ourselves. I feel like that, as it comes for the computer systems, that has been very well accomplished. People are calling and saying, hey, I like this, or I have this idea. And I think we've accomplished that. We have in place a computer replacement system to where I replace 20 computers a year and bring things up to date. We're pretty up to date. Hopefully, we will have to replace all of the computers using Windows 2000... What am I thinking? All the computers that are using 2007 by December of 2020. That's when it will no longer be supported by Windows. It said we replaced servers, uh, the expensive lease that we had here. The server at the police department was actually, um, too small for what they do. We've put a new server in there. And we've networked those two servers plus we have another server that is there specifically for backup. So we have a three-tier backup system for all of the information in the city.
You're alright, you're a little nervous, but you're alright, Paul.
You're gonna come down and decide. I did this and I didn't realize how much I've done. I have almost two pages of things that we've updated and brought. So I'm trying to pick and choose what I'm giving, because if I went through it all, I'd bore you, bore you guys to tears.
No, believe it, buddy, I, I know what you've done, okay? And I appreciate the heck out of it.
We've, we've installed time clocks.
Yes.
Instead of doing writing.
We got pay online. We're in the water department now, my wife loves that quite a way.
A lot of people.
You know, it's amazing because when I first got elected 13 years ago, we didn't even have direct deposit for payroll. And that was a heck of a fight just to get that, guys, because when people get embedded in their ways they don't wanna change. I mean, and it took an act of Congress to get that and to get online paying over there at the water department. It was just amazing what it took to get those two things accomplished.
And it's amazing how many people are willing to use it. My office is next to the water department. I don't wanna work in there. I feel sorry for the women that work in there, I'll tell you that. If I worked in there, they probably put me in jail because they do much better at dealing with these people that just wanna scream and yell and piss out of...
You know, that's something that we don't see as a council and we need to really appreciate is the abuse that our employees take at the hands of citizens. Because if this happens.
Another big issue, well, issue and big thing is the new library. They had 17 public use computers in the old library, we upped that to 20. I'm actually thinking we may even need to go more than that. Those 20 computers, I've, at least once a day, all 20 computers are in use plus the Wi-Fi. There's been, there's been a lot of shakedown on crews on that. We've had to get things up and running and get their different running parts. But we haven't had, um, one of the main things in the last few months was Wi-Fi. I take a lot of grief on that because I shut it down. We had a hacker that was going in there and downloading videos. If one more video was downloaded, the federal government would shut down the Wi-Fi for the library permanently. No more. So I shut it down.
That's the last thing we want.
No, yeah, it's the last thing we want.
It's the last thing we want.
There were a lot of complaints about it. We now have a very robust firewall at the library and, um, we have the network, there's two networks set up there, one is a public network and one is a private. So everything that the library business-wise is kept private and the public Wi-Fi is very strongly controlled. We get reports on it. Along with that, I worked at a prison for 12 years and one of the warden's best favorite saying was, "Security is not convenient."
That's right.
And I get, that's probably the biggest thing that people get frustrated with me because I'm constantly saying, you can't do that, you need to have a password. So, um, we do have, all of the city has the same antivirus now, instead of having, I think we had 15 different ones.
I thought it was 12. I thought it wasn't 12.
It was, we, I have, I have 13 buildings and probably in those, yeah, and then probably another third of that were computers that had nothing on him at all.
Questions for, yeah, Mr. Wheaton? Mr. Wheaton, sorry about that. Manny?
I just wanna thank you for the good job.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. To GPD.
I believe...
I say the lieutenant needs to stand up and talk to us, but this one.
Do you know, David, were they wedding this tabled or you, did you bring other paperwork?
Mayor and city councilors, we actually tabled this and spoke with the county clerk or the city clerk earlier, we referenced this. We're just holding off because we need to get the proper paperwork available.
So you want, okay, so we're gonna table this, then?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to table item number five, GPD purchase of a police unit.
I make a motion to table it?
Second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez?
Yes.
Councilor Poyah?
Yes.
Cool. You're up, baby.
Something going on right now, I may leave in a few minutes.
Well, that's okay, go for it.
Mayor and council, we had the, uh, JPA for reorganization of the CRCC and we take out the percentages as asked and I believe it's the document that we won't be able to live with now. I'm asking for approval.
Questions, comments?
The only thing I see different there, I mean, uh, I read the other one and I read this one. What do you think of the percentage? The only thing I see is that Robert Abrego is there.
Oh, I'm sure that's changed on their page, maybe not this one, but I'm sure it's changed on theirs, yes.
In page seven or eight?
I got this a few months ago before things changed.
Yeah, that's what I...
Exactly. I'm sure they were changed that right now.
That's the only thing.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You may not have the answer, but the voters approved this tax in November of 2016.
Yes.
When did the tax start, when did we start paying the tax?
July 1st of 2017.
Okay, so we've been paying for a little over a year. How much money has been collected? How much money does it take for the CRCC to operate in a year? And how much money is going to the emergency medical and behavioral health services? And what is that entity?
Well, to put it mildly, the boilerplate information that I had to go through to put on the ballot had to include that. I have no idea why, but it did. To date, we have, not we, but the county or the city and the village have taken in $811,000 this last fiscal year from, uh...
The Grocey team.
Grocey, the course that is taken out and, and paid to the county, $811,000. It costs about $805,000 to run the CRCC, so that leaves a paltry $6,000 left.
So no amount is going to the other component?
Not yet, no, ma'am.
Is any money ever going to the other?
We would hope so, we would hope so. And the county is a fiscal agent, so I can't really tell you where the dollars go. I know how much is spent at, for the communications there because we look at their budget. And I look every month diligently on the taxation website and it spells out down to the penny how many dollars are taken in.
Although this document and the previous ones, um, rule that we have a board and with representation from all the entities and so, Robert, you're our representative on that board.
Correct, I'm the chairman as well.
And so that committee can take feedback from the government entities as to how they want the money spent, if there's changes they want.
We do make recommendations and...
Well, my recommendation is to operate that sucker, you don't need the tax. What you do with that other money that's left over, I would suggest that you update equipment and stuff as you can.
Exactly.
Okay, but don't be coming back with one more.
I will try my best, but you never say no, signee, because some stuff happens.
It's like I say about the prison, I will never say no, but I won't go back there.
Yeah.
Because if it's for my family, I would go back there, so...
Yeah, I have told...
They ain't in the plan.
I've told the director time and time again, please stay under the budget. And she has done that, so...
Anything else?
It's gonna answer all of them, we're gonna guys, muddy them up, councilor.
No.
I'm good with it, guys. I'm gonna take the motion.
I don't wanna see this again.
Yes.
That's true, unfortunately, if the county, if the county, the city, or the village wants to change the JPA, it has to come before everybody again.
Yeah, but they agreed with it before, we were the ones that changed it.
Yeah, and they, and they all agree with the change.
So the minute we approve it, the other ones are gonna approve it, so we're good.
No, they've already gone ahead and approved it, we have the last again, yeah.
We need the last again.
That'll work. Somebody?
I make a motion to approve the reorganization of the city, Milan Regional Communications Center.
Second.
I second.
That's right.
Yes.
That's right, yes, councilor.
Thank you very much.
Utilities annual CPI increase, now this is what we were talking about with the village. When we do our CPI increases, that's a cost-price index increase that we're required to do yearly in order to keep operating. It's been as low as .05%, and I think the highest I've ever seen was 2.8, 2.7. Um, this one's what, 2 on the nose, right?
2.2.
2.2.
And my question is, I mean, we're not, this is just an informational item, we don't get to vote on it. And I want to know, why we can't vote? Why couldn't we vote no?
And we could.
But we can't because of the ordinances.
The ordinances on the CPI increase?
The ordinances because that's what this document says. Why can't, this is not even up for vote. And I wanted, I don't wanna, I don't, why do we have to increase it? We don't have to increase it.
No, we don't have to increase it.
Why are we increasing it? It's 2.2. The, the consumer, what is this?
Price index.
The price index, does that talk about Grants, New Mexico? Or does it talk about the state of New Mexico? Or does it talk about the United States? We're not that, doing that hot thing.
You know, and, and the point is, we still have to pay to fix when it breaks and stuff like that. Um, I agree.
It keeps going up.
Yeah, it goes up every single year.
Every single year.
Every single year, no matter what we do.
Never, ever...
Never goes down, kinda like taxes.
Well, it's been quite a while since we had a study. Um, there was a study done probably about 10 years ago that showed what we should be increasing in every year. Uh, my suggestion would be, now that we've got our new plant coming on board, we'll have some calculations as to what the energy costs are for that, that we should really look at, um, what are we charging, could we, could we lower it? And if we could, that would be my recommendation as well.
Um, so here's something for you. Let's just table this tonight. Let's just go ahead and table this tonight and we'll bring it up next month after, after we see where we're at with the new wastewater treatment plant and all that good stuff.
What kind of study?
Yeah, well, you know, it's not really a study, we just need to wait till, just wanna keep a track of our line and see where they got there.
See what we did.
Because another thing about that is, is if Milan's got it money, which I don't believe they're gonna because the state made us make our wastewater treatment plant to treat their crap. So I don't believe that that's gonna happen. But if it does, our bills are gonna go way up because you're not gonna have that revenue coming in from Milan.
Well, I know.
Okay, so I'm good with tabling this and waiting to see what happens, guys. I don't have a problem with that at all. It's up to you guys on the council.
Well, and then what we could do is we could alter our ordinance.
Well, you all bring the ordinance, change the ordinance, guys.
And, and on this first page, this, the refuse rate increases. Now, I couldn't find the ordinance, the 06114. I did find an ordinance, 061164 that talks about solid waste collection, but there was, I couldn't find this 06114. So when we bring it up again, could...
We'll bring the ordinances with you.
When we bring that one?
Did you get that, Robert? You got that?
Yes.
Cause I had the ordinance from ordinance number one.
You betcha.
And I couldn't find this one.
Okay. Nope, we got you, not a problem. Well, uh, okay, entertain a motion to table it, somebody make a motion.
I moved and we tabled, the 30th annual, all of these.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Yes.
Manny?
Fred?
Cool. Comments from the council? Sidney?
I wanna thank the city for its removal. I bet you can acknowledge, I did, I, my street usually got bad, but it did not. And I was like, kept looking out and it took me a day in order to go down and see that, you know, Mesa was clear, so I figured, cause I had to make a run out to Airport Animal Clinic. So I was really happy. And then when the guy came on my street on Thursday, I was even more happy. And I wanna thank my neighbors for shoveling their snow. I did notice that our houses face north.
Oh, yeah.
So we need to shovel the snow. And I know a neighbor across the street, Ralph, shoveled even though he faces south. But I noticed that a lot of people did not shovel the snow on their sidewalks and it made it hard for people who have to walk, they had to walk in the road. And that is our responsibility to kind of keep our little thing up, so... Other than that, I don't wanna say anything bad, it's 2019.
Manny? Fred? I got one thing. And Mr. Wheaton horses is right down your alley. I've been the mayor for five years in March and that building is still sitting down there. Those cars are still in that lot. And I'm ready to go burn it down myself. It's time. How many years is it bid since we've been pushing on that property?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we just got three quotes for bids for as best as possible.
Make my day, I want them something down.
And right after that, then we go out for bid for a contractor to knock them all down.
And I wanna reiterate what Sidney said about the roads. Um, I worked through the whole snowstorm and I was rolling into town an hour and 15 minutes from San Mateo to Grants because the state never hit that road until... because the state never hit that road until my last day at work. Okay, so that was ten inches of snow on the road, anybody that works out there knows that. It was a pretty rough week. But what was really nice is, once we got into the city limit of Grants, all of our main arteries were cleared. All of our bus routes for our schools, even though schools weren't running, our bus routes were cleared. And that's what we want, we hit the residential's when we can, if we can. But our main goal is those main arteries, to get you to the stores and the doctors and stuff like that, and to get kids to school. So, go ahead, Laura.
Um, three of our, um, street crew will be going to a, a paving course in Albuquerque in the next few weeks, I don't remember, sometime now in January. So we, um, we're looking for various trainings to send them to.
Everybody always getting better at what we're doing, you know? I mean, we've only been doing this for one year. And we'll get better, the more we do it, the better we'll get at it. We'll be able to tell if the mix is right, just when they pour it out. I mean, but we're trying, guys, and it's like I said at the beginning of the meeting, all I've tried to do is treat everybody fairly when it comes to the wastewater treatment plant. And with the new one coming online, everything that we did, we bent over backwards from Milan. And the only reasons we're at meter readings is because that's what they wanted. That wasn't our suggestion, that was theirs. And I warned them then. You may not like what's coming through those pipes, guys. And now that's their complaint again, they're not sending that one. So we'll see what happens, I mean...
Honey, are they saying to read the White Phoenix?
No, um, it's, um, two...
One last thing, for you newspaper guys, January tenth, at the library, the town hall meeting on First and Second Street paving, which will be starting now in May. You will make sure that that hits the papers. I'll entertain a motion to shut this meeting down.
Make a motion.
Second, all of you say aye.